No, they do. I mean, they do. They're always more of an opportunity.
Yeah.
Well, it didn't want to be played in a, um, they don't sign. Uh, but this is not a special time call where that's putting application of strategy that would have been that. Um, so it's not, we're not saying that that's what it's important to do more right away, but there will be some opportunity for the public to uh, inch of that voice there. It was why we really encourage our residents to attend our meeting and our having public hearings and just discussing these items. And, and I, I would encourage them to probably get to that public hearing. Um, fortunately, because they are involved in all of the conversations leading on to, um, strategy and submitting them. Um, and they are ready to do so with smoking and smoking at this point. They sure are. Absolutely.
Alright folks, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is seven oh one P M. If we can start with a second please. And if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, good, liberty, and justice.
Just as a reminder, if you have a cell phone with you, please make sure it's on silent or off. Senator Domingo, if you can take roll call for us, please.
Officer Williams.
President.
We.
Yeah.
Here.
Flower.
Here.
Davis.
President.
Brian.
And we are Canada.
Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So we'll start out this evening with a few presentations. Um, we're going to start off with the proclamation for the fifty-fourth annual professional municipal clerks week, which is April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I Victoria Garcia Snyder, mayor of the city of Albion, do recognize the week of April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty twenty-three as professional municipal clerks week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk Jill Domingo and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So this was, uh, pretty timely. Knowing that Jill has been a servant to the city of Albion for several years, has gone through several elections, several meetings, is present at all meetings and reporting vital information. So this was just the way that I wanted to express my appreciation to Jill and for all that she does for all of us here in the city of Albion. Alright, next we have Chief Kip who will be coming up to present on the annual report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so I'm here tonight to report on our annual report. Um, I think I've been so far, uh, it's not a huge, uh, lot of changes to it. Um, regardless of the same. Yeah, this is our current staff in our department. And you can see, uh, we still have five additions up there that are open. Um, we had two open, they were converted down, uh, we just hired uninovative, started with the stabbing next Monday. We have a lot of innovative that'll be ready, ready for the stabbing next Friday. Um, and then, uh, we have one officer, Cody Hayes, who's in, uh, field training, but he's the one that broke his ankle. So he's kind of on hold, uh, having surgery again, if I say, I believe. Uh, to have a screw removed from his ankle and then another six weeks, I think, before he'd be back to work and, uh, finish preparing. Um, part of what I emphasized in the report was to do, you know, and hiring, uh, I've never experienced this. I, I feel like I've been hired because I sort of received. But I've never, for instance, I've been trying to hire so many people, I mean, doing people once back at the beginning of. Um, I hired seven people last year, uh, two of them were, uh, like over the police academy, it's, that's the head of the, at the academy. Uh, two of them left our agency over for other agencies. Um, and then, uh, Shannon Coleman was the only one of your, who's currently working as a patrol officer on the street right now. Cody Hayes is the other one who, uh, obviously figured it had to end for work. So. Uh, he was around here last year, hiring so many people and still not getting worked about where you're going to be retiring. Uh, and we're still having the same problems now and, uh, we did that and just like other major pieces throughout the state and the country are having right now. Uh, we had three openings, uh, that we've been trying to build since the first of the year. We, we did interviews. Uh, we chose three people, all those three people, and one of them passed all the background investigations and the psych exam and everything else to get into the police academy. Uh, we had three spots reserved in the Washington Police Academy. Uh, initially we were told they didn't have any and then they expanded the academy and we got them in there. Uh, when I told they didn't have any, I just heard three spots in the Atlantic Academy, which starts in August. I still have those three spots, uh, and so I'll hopefully get you more people hired by that academy, but uh, other agencies either have the same problems, academies get filled and can't get people in the academy. Uh, I know two weeks, I'm friends with up in Eaton Rapids, had a young man that he's ready to hire, uh, and wants to get in the Atlantic Academy in August. Can't get a spot as well. So I was gonna make a comment that I actually had two spots, but. So. Uh, but it's all works. Uh, I was told Washington, uh, police branch has fifteen of the spot in that academy. Or, and I think roughly thirty to forty people. So, uh, if you're trying to hire hundreds of people, you can only get thirty or forty to your academy. Uh, it's kind of hard to do that. Um, that's been a struggle for our agency and agency across the country. It's tried to find people where you're not doing this work. And then recruiting come here, it seems, so they're running, they're watching, pay a lot of money here, whatever reason. So. But in my experience, people tend to stay close by and where they're from. We don't find too many people that move along this to come work here. We got a few. I think I'm probably one of the few exceptions, uh, having grown up around what area and then moving out in after I graduated college. But, uh, generally people want to stay in their hometown or near their hometown where, so we find a lot of people in this area. Um, we've seen, we've seen others from, uh, the last three years, the, it's hard on most of the people all the way across there. Uh, well, the, we're down a little bit on the south of the nation, but that, we've got a lot of people. Less people can do what work, you know, um, but overall, this could all preserve, it's a market example, people. If you have any questions about any ways of calling, feel free to stop me at. Uh, this is also.
Councilman Williams.
I'm sorry, what's the age group for joining the academy?
So in, in St. Michigan, you're sponsored by an agency that hired at eighteen. Um, if you want to put yourself through, you have to be twenty-one, graduate, please get me. Um, in Michigan, you can't carry a gun into here, you can't, if I'm a police officer. Um, but I can still, you know, and so we tend to say on maturity level that we, everybody tries to raise to twenty-one. Uh, the four hundreders, the four hundred, I need just, I don't want to mature them, I'm a graduate, but.
Perfect, thank you.
Um.
A, a while back, it's been some years because my daughter was in it. They had classes at the school. That was, that worked with kids because she wanted to be an attorney. And so she was taking these classes because it was a law.
Yeah.
Thing for kids to go and get to be policemen or state police.
Really, the first I've got, they're still officers, they're, 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 they're high school students. Um, some in County, in municipal district, you can go do that.
Do any of my kids know about that?
Um, I imagine they do through Martha's School, um. But I, I know, uh, my son is friendly, so I don't know how terminer he is to go on, but it is available.
In tenth grade, there's a, um, visitation for all tenth graders to go to the Boets C A C C. And so they, if they are interested, you know, that could be one of their selections, you know, because they can, I think, visit two, two programs.
And it's interesting having a son, he's, he's eighteen now and he's getting ready to graduate and he with, I, I had him pulled down in the world, he's, uh, seventh grade. After seventh grade, it wasn't so cool anymore. And now he's getting ready to graduate, thinking about being a cop. So it's, it's, it's hard to get those people in less than a minute and usually a little bit after that where they, you don't realize it.
Might not be a bad thing.
And, and it really hits bang and pay, the pay wise. Uh, there are departments out there right now for experienced officers, uh, I think it was the, uh, or you can hire them, they have the experience at seventy-seven, I think, thousand dollars a year. Um, I think we start our people off forty-four right now. Um, I mean, that, that's close to what I make. And that doesn't include the overtime if you're going to go as well. I mean, you could easily make over a thousand dollars a year, police officer, something like this. So. Yeah, I'm too, I mean, I'm putting in a lot of, uh, they talk about a hundred thousand hour morning, you make a year. The public safety officers, they have other, they offer, who the five thousand dollars a year to the city. Alright, uh, one question. Uh, these are the calls I type, can we go on? And credit, credit, I lose these a lot, a few here, uh, credit stops, criminal complaints are every month, we try to, we do. The, all other reports, I think they'll be right before time, our criminal incidents, um, and then your total instant reports you wrote. Uh, and then the service calls that we go on, which are things that we generally don't write reports on, which is so vastly on base for the else you do. Uh, and I wouldn't have thought of our agency, they might have extra things that we do for service calls. Whether it's online, people's cars, or assisting people in lockdown, or whatever you can think of. Uh, generally, people don't come to call me, call us, and you try to figure out what you can do to help them out. Or if you have crimes or your more serious crimes, uh, you're not allowed to take your felonies and not like. That's not quite right because I'm telling you, so. Um, you can see most of our crime is down except for a few things. Uh, it's, the current year, we don't want the yellow ones. Um, our things were not deeper up, your, the features, my, I'm sure. Um, and our integrated assaults were up, but, uh, everything else was down for the most part. Uh, including our, our assault that ended down to, you know, that bit, but. Uh, overall, I'm staying pretty steady. It doesn't change a lot for your year. There are one days, like, you're there for something, I think, on the note, your year depending on your situation, so. Um, if there was a huge drop in something, I questioned it, but for the most part, to me, this is steady crime that we have. Usually non-intimidation, that's why I started the other assault, it's often occurred last year, it was, that was, I actually had a lot of mistakes, but. I checked that, it doesn't quite look right, but, uh, it was interesting that that was down so much compared to, uh, past years. But, uh, especially consistently, you know, we had, that's kind of good, but, uh, I don't have any other reason for it, other than it just happened.
But intimidation stalking is up.
I think that's because, so given to intimidation and stalking is, uh, kind of newer, uh, the way the law was written, I can remember what it was written. Uh, but it's taken more serious now with all the incidents that go on around the country, uh, with all the firearms, with, uh, deaths and stuff like that. So, uh, I think people are more likely to report it, so take your calls on it. And that, that would be our reasoning for that being, uh, is, uh, people realize it's a crime and more people are concerned about, like, in action and stuff, they're asking us to be more. Uh, grab a good one, friend. It's stayed pretty steady. Uh, obviously, in the last couple of years, we've done more, but if you look at your tribe for that, I mean, probably put a big hole in that, that's probably the reason the numbers were down. For, uh, two thousand and nineteen, not necessarily, I can't really give you answers for that, but, um, that could have sent you some, well, that, but. Um, the last couple of years, I think, maybe it's their enforcement. Uh, and if you look at our, uh, accidents on the next page, significant secrets and accidents over the last couple of years. Um. Definitely shows that some of that traffic enforcement is doing, it's all good, uh, it's got some of that, the accidents are great. Um, as you, as you look at it, yeah, it's our way high to get us support, then you can down, it's like. I think a few accidents that involved alcohol, uh, and it's rarely do you have a fatal accident. That one's, it had to do with both runners and that's, there's a whole lot that didn't vary on it for, I mean, it had an accident, that's fair, unless they're, it's kind of, I'll read it to that. Uh, our fire response has been stayed pretty steady over the years. And one thing I want to mention on this, I, I figured out, I think it's wrong last year. Um, I think those numbers are right for all four years now. Um, but the numbers, if you go back and look at last year's numbers, weren't the numbers for fire call, oh, my God, I was forgetting last, what's on here? I realized I just put down something and it didn't give me the full set of numbers. So, uh, this is the more accurate, general of the last four years than last year it was, but. But again, these, these numbers stay pretty consistent for a good year. Uh, and I just add these slides anywhere in the report, but just to give you an idea of what we're doing, we play on the fire side. Um, it was a little higher last year for, uh, for calls into the city, uh, but overall, again, it's a, it's a, uh, where we are with, uh, I'm not trying to say, it's sort of, uh, giving, giving more actual, last few years than we did previous to that, but, um. And this is our, this is other agency calls, uh, which was way down last year. I'm not sure why that is, but, um, it was less, less perspective for modern police agents last year. And they'd be stabbing, they're stabbing, not needing to call us so much, but. Most of that due to the sheriff department. And now medical calls, um, we don't require any medical, medical calls anymore. Uh, prior to COVID, uh, we ran all fire, medical calls, that's why I don't believe, because you're so high in two thousand and nineteen, then it went down after that. And COVID then, ninety-nine percent of those times, we're just standing waiting for an ambulance to show up. So we've switched to a policy, we'll be on the governor's request specifically by the ambulance service, or if they know there's a, uh, area of arrest in progress, we can actually be of service before the ambulance is there. Uh, but that's why it was a hundred thousand. That is all.
Your next report, so will you, um, it may not be needed, but include, when did you have to request assistance from outside agencies?
That's hard to report, even, you know, we put the fire review, well, at least that's not necessarily reported. Um, and the odd part about that, through the police department, is unlike with fire, the sheriff's department, the anti-state, well, have jurisdiction of the city. So they can come here and do all the enforcement they want to do, um, that you may not do with request.
And so recently, we've had a lot of action.
Right, uh, and I heard that, uh, especially the handle numbers that I think might divide it by jurisdiction, those agencies that I might be able to tell when they were out here, but we're necessarily saying where we asked for it, or they're just doing it on their own. You have any other questions about, I, and the question button is considered. Especially if it's, if it's bad, if anyone's about that, it's a secret, it's a, uh.
Whatever you need to tell us, Councilor Miller.
Thank you so much. How many catalytic converters been stolen?
A lot. Then super problem outside city, let me guess, you, um.
Here we have, I'm one.
We got all the, uh, it's always in house, and they're, they're not, they're, where we got the car down on the main side, so. Um, yeah, they're high value and.
Got a lot, a lot of calls about it.
Yeah. And, and not just us, it's, we were on the county, it's, it was people on the target, saw somebody's driving, I didn't know it was my ear, but.
Yes, just be careful when wildflower, flower also. They having the same problem.
Yeah. They're working on things. I mean, you've got a few problems that will be installed. They they turn it. Laws affect how that goes on. And I think they're working on second. Then people brought them a thousand dollars. And so it's difficult to, you know. But that kind of value on one thing that you can go steal. They're doing a better job recycling centers and trying to force that, but they did that under control, passed the law, did you pack them in that? What is it going to do?
How are the, how was the radar signs? Did you see it?
We took them down and pulled this part of the mirror because the battery did not even last a whole day. And so now that it's warm enough, I'm hoping to get it back out and put them out. Like the best is is they got needed for you, like, I mean, um, the hardest part of some of the streets, there's not a speed on the Sunday street. I can't figure out how it's gonna do that. Uh, because speed is regulated. If it's a, if it's a city street, it's smart about us hours that posted, but we don't post a lot on trees. Uh, but if there's a specific area you want, uh, I think we've gotten about getting sides up and maybe it was speed on the side of the law on the side for a great time. That's the on the range of certain areas are getting a little bit of backup. Uh, and how we are just warmed up next week.
Any other questions for Chief Kip? I just wanted to thank your team, um, because as we started off, we're talking about how down we are with officers. Um, but the numbers haven't changed much over the years. So we're still able to provide the service that our community needs. Um, we have had some not so great incidents, but they haven't been bad because of the training.
Right. Well, between the training and the partnerships now that we have the other agencies, um, I don't know if everybody's square all the partnerships that we have with all the agencies today. The the entire company in this county is equal, like, you know, we all work together and amazing together. Uh, when we have problems, uh, when we had the homicide on second three the other night, uh, state police talking the next day, they ran out of the bus, said, hey, I've got this team, wasn't home, we could put people over there, we've got camera. So they gave me all this stuff. Uh, we have the the uh, Hamjet team, which is our evidence team, which is uh, officer from every agency and county that work together. So we need to have this a large team like that, all them, and we'll get three or four officers to come in, to raise to the crime scene. So. I notice when I vote, I always think the trial was smart, um, and everybody likes it probably just from their part of the camp yet. And they're coming to do an ad or part of the drawing team now, um, the fact that we can fly around at the crime scene. Uh, the crime scene in the city was a large crime scene, it's very covered a lot of area. You know, get that aerial view of it, it's just huge, you know, there will be a lot of that. So, um, it's great that we're able to do the major crime task works well with our detectives that all work together on all these things. Uh, so we've got detectives from all the agencies, the crimes community from all the agencies, the drunk people from all the agencies. Uh, we just, we've got a great group of agencies that's down to work together. And you just don't see that in a lot of places. Just brought that back and and better. We shared children's resources while we're able to do something that otherwise we just couldn't do with the number of that.
So we appreciate that. Any other questions?
Yes, one other question. As you're talking, I'm just thinking about some of the statistics regarding Albion and the crime in Albion. Do you have recommendations in terms of how can we address that? Because it doesn't look good.
Well, um, I don't know. You say there's no difference in, and over time, it's not a lot of difference. We have the population and the amount of crime that we have. Um, the one thing that that helps, um, and and just to give an example, New York City has six officers per thousand people. Uh, and now we have about two point two officers per thousand people. Um, and so, you know, you can put more officers on street corners, take them in more places, it helps. It doesn't really help reduce, right? More visibility you have, the one thing you do. And we talked about it in time by entering my officer department, both ours and places, you know, it's working. Uh, just little things like that, be in certain areas, do certain things, uh, more always directing to the problem areas that we have. But when you have one or two, or I mean, she's one, two or three people burning, you know, maybe it's all, there's nobody else out there going anywhere, so. Um, but I do think, uh, with the, with the couple instances that we have, the the sickless, uh, command, post commander is willing to send people this way. Uh, and you'll see more say, if we start at the pound, oh, yeah, obviously we're definitely some power. Uh, even though they're just driving through that whole process, it's basically a difference, I think, and and. Um, it takes people. And again, even part of the decision we have. I know you just started, I mean, portion about school days competition. Um, we were not able to find anyone with that position, but, um, sure, maybe he feels he has the staff to do it. And so for this year, uh, the sheriff's gonna staff or for next year, the sheriff's gonna staff that position for Albion, so to be sure that the schools here know.
Thank you, Chief Kip. Appreciate that information. Thank you. And next we have the community foundation with a short presentation.
Leading council, it's there to the address third. Um, I wanted, I thought it would be a good time as we, um, get ramping up on our summer product foundation, we will update to the council and fill out our projects. Um, the major kind of being for our Albion and the hardest if we ever received, um, and I'll do the support person instructor to the Tony Christie Nicola family. And I also thought it would be a good time to celebrate, um, what will be the first full year of Manhattan Park being in full capacity to operate both slash pad and the playground and the pavilion. Um, and also some of the other victims that have had because of this investment now again. So first, I'd like to actually present the city with a gift from the community foundation. We, um, had some large scale portraits done of the slash pad playground. And we thought that the city would like to have that as well. That's not available, but here we go. So why didn't you take photos? Why didn't you take the photos? Um, we have a couple others. I'm just bringing up, let Haley, um, come down and decide she wants some additional. Um, bigger ones, though, this is the main one, kind of celebrating the slash pad and building a good playground there. Um, and we want to say thank you to council and to the mayor for working so hard and, um, working with the combination to make sure these products come online. So this product is complete, um, on this end, this summer you'll see working on the van shell, um, the money's coming in to do large deal here is the van shell. Um, and as we work on our partnership with the college, um, we have booked the remainder of the legal fund. So the legal family committed two million, we raised two million. So for a total of four million, actually it's a four point two million, is what we raised. The county gave over half a million. Um, we've had donors, chip in fifty and twenty five thousand dollars a piece all the way down to a dollar, um, to support this initiative. Um, because of this work, um, uh, the city and the hall is able to apply for a DNR grant. Um, and it was reported in the first round, that million dollar spark grant. Um, I wanted to announce to council tonight because of our involvement with the community foundation, um, and the work we've done back in that spark, we're now eligible for a special pot of money being put through the council mission foundations. Where we can identify for another million to three million for other parks and resources in this community. So because we made that community barrier that years ago, that our infrastructure were really important to our community. It is brought a lot of money and resources to make sure, um, that we can shore that up for, uh, many generations to come. So trying to thank you, um, if you see Tony and Kristi around town, they're here multiple times a year. Um, thanking them would be appropriate. Um, they've invested in Albion in a big way and we're very appreciative of that work. Um, I would take the community foundation board for initiative to guide us in this direction. Um, as we work to improve parks and public spaces for, um, youth, but especially our whole community. So, um, we're very excited about that. I just wanted to come say thank you, the gift, the work keeps moving. There will be more stuff like this, um, this year and the years to come. So, um, it's coming out, so I know you guys.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
And Director Bryan, I'm correct, the splash pad will open Memorial Day weekend?
Yeah.
Memorial Day weekend, and it'll be open through the summer for everyone at that point. Awesome. So if you have anybody asking, that's when we'll get rolling. Thank you so much. All right, public comment. If there's anybody in the, uh, chamber that would like to stand and address council in regards to an agenda item. They do so at this time in three minutes. All right. Moving on. In our packets, we have the consent calendar items. We have the permit for Harry Bonner's event on September seventeenth. We have the minutes from our April twenty fourth special meeting. And then we also have, um, the annual happy sales that's being asked for approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some will support.
Uh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Right. Next is the approval for the Whitman Bridge inspection proposal. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some will support.
City Manager Snyder, if you'd like to give us information on this.
Thank you, Mayor. So included in your packet, we received a proposal from Whitman and Associates, um, to complete the annual bridge inspections. Um, they are due to the state of Michigan, uh, by August. Um, so they are looking to fully inspect the Haven Road and the North Albion Street Bridge, um, as well as review some of our files and records. We're required to keep certain information and reports, so they will review everything that we have, make sure that we are in compliance. Um, it looks like for a total of two thousand four twenty five. Um, so we're just bringing this to you for approval so that they can begin now, begin that work. And the two, I'm sorry, the two engineers that we'll be working with, um, Sam Leach, he is the current project manager for the North Albion Street Bridge. And then Susanna, um, she, I don't remember her last name, but she, um, worked with her, we worked with her for our DM's feasibility study. So they're familiar with our community, they're familiar with our structure, so they're, um, really great to work with.
Any questions for City Manager Snyder of this item?
Number one.
Yes.
Reed, yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
And Nancy.
Yes. Next is discussion item in regards to the EDC interlocal agreement. Tony Hartness.
Um, yeah, so I'll be brief because we obviously covered this in our, in our discussion. There was a previous version of this agreement that I had, uh, it included some items that I had expressed concern, uh, to the EDC's attorney about, and um, they probably should not have been included in that agreement, uh, that EDC voted on. I'm not sure why they were. Um, what you have in packets tonight is a version of the agreement that the EDC attorney and I did discuss. I did integrate the change requested by the EDC, changing the term from two years to five years. Made some other tweaks, um, that we, you know, had, uh, discussion during our work session, um. Just as a point of clarification, the section that references the low income housing and federally aided housing only applies to that government subsidized housing that would be regulated by a housing commission. It doesn't affect low income housing that's privately developed. Aside from that, I also, uh, kept the two paragraphs that I referenced in our work session, that, um, the termination paragraph and the, and the term paragraphs were in direct conflict with each other, um, in the version that the EDC voted on. So that is remained. Um, I, I kept that out of this agreement because they, they made absolutely no sense, so I'm not sure why they were added. Um, so, uh, this has been sent, uh, to the EDC's attorney for review. Um, and so my recommendation would be that the council, uh, just basically wait for EDC to vote on this version and, uh, then it can come to council for approval. But this is the version I'm, I am okay with, and I have expressed that to, um, EDC's attorney, Mr. Nelson Carr.
Any questions or comments, Mayor B. M. Jackson?
So, um, just hopefully tonight, if they, I mean, with all your recommendations and clarifying some of the language in there. And once it goes to the EDC and the lawyer there. Consents with it and to bring it back, hopefully we'll be done with this.
Yeah, I, I was fine to vote on the version that the attorney and I had discussed, for somehow that agreement got changed and it never came back to me. Or I would have told them, hey, I'm not okay with this. So had, had I been involved in that part of the discussion, I would have told EDC, don't vote on this because I can't recommend this to approval to the city council. But this is a version I am completely okay with. So as if they adopt this as is or something very close to it, you should be able to vote on it.
And the next.
As soon as EDC approves it.
Right, yeah, I mean, this. We got work. All right.
Next is our discussion on defense ordinance. Director Arnold, can I become of the latest on that again? Thank you.
So, uh, I'll use my home sciences. And three, because we have that session, but, uh, right now, we're going to some, um, some updates and I have also changes to our. Now, largely, uh, based on conversation that our co-leader officer and I, Mayor Jackson, had a resident that is really out of line with all three of us, um, some problems. And our ordinance ordinance, so rather than file that, or just say, okay, that, let's see if there's some things we can. Yeah, you did, council wants to get specific directions, I'll tell you, but, um, that's where I'm.
Well, I thank you for that, taking that lead on it, and we will, we will follow your leads. And as you bring the information back to us, we'll review it and we'll go from there. I mean, because we're, we're working for the good of our residents and not for just precincts, we're for all of our precincts. So I appreciate your work, I'm stepping up and doing that.
Attorney Hartness.
Yeah, so I'll work with the planning director. I mean, there's several sections in there that are probably going to need amendments, so we'll go through them and redline and make sure that we're both good with them before we bring them to you to look at. So.
Appreciate that. All right, thank you, Ian. And then last is, um, the contract modifications for Haven Road project. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some will.
City Manager Snyder.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so last week we received a contract modification for the Haven, Haven Road and River Street project. When they began to work on Haven, um, Road Bridge, they found that the, the bridge deck was, um, more deteriorated than they initially planned for. Um, so before you, for approval is a contract modification to increase the, um, contract amount. We're looking at a change of forty six thousand and one dollars. Um, so recommending for approvals. And as we discussed in the study session, when we do large projects like these, there are contingencies built in for, um, things of this nature.
Questions or comments for City Manager Snyder? Can you quick mail?
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Well, yes.
Yes.
And Nancy.
Yes. Feature agenda. Anything that we would, yeah.
Thank you so much. Um, I would like to put on the agenda for, uh, discussion and approval for an autistic sign on Marion Street. We have a resident that has an autistic son. Um, I have a grandson that is autistic. Um, I'm expressing to the council, um, that I, I wanted to do well, my process of doing this, um, I would do it the same way I did for Maple Street. They wanted to, um, make their street one side parking. Um, so that, uh, for the safety of the children and for the, uh, fire trucks to get through. So they wanted one side, no parking. So what I did was, um, the council at that time recommended that I, um, survey the whole street to see if that's something, you know, um, that they wanted. And yes or no, I would pick up the survey. I brought it back to council. We discussed it. We approved it. So I would like to do the same thing.
Any other items?
Uh, yes, I responded to, um, social media posts. That was very relevant, uh, in terms of improving, uh, a certain section. We have, we, the extension of Wiener Drive, of Wiener Street. I don't know if it's drive or street, but anyway, the section behind Family Fair adjacent to, uh, adjacent to, um,
Eric Jones. The driveway that goes between.
Precisely, yeah, right. Now, but I think everyone in town knows that, um. I contacted, uh, our personnel and did some research. He did some research on, uh, possible repairs. Would you like to talk a little bit about what you did? And maybe some ideas, so we can share some ideas, but I would like for it to be a future agenda item for discussion.
Yep, yes.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I just researched on Wiener Drive, uh, from the parking lot that, um, tractor supply moving south to, uh, Watson. That particular piece of street has a lot of water running across it. It's a disaster. It was a disaster when I got here. I did look at some extensive repairs to at least put a ten to twelve year repair to that road without adding curves, without creating a lot of drainage issues. We're looking at forty three thousand dollars to complete that. Uh, the question that has been brought up would be would the, would the city approve of myself or representative of the city? To entertain the idea.
Yes.
That's, that's something that I'm asking the council, if there's approval for that kind of thing, and of course through Haley, whatever is necessary.
My suggestion would be, you're probably, A, would be better for the people donating if you filter it through a five oh one C three. And I think you're more likely to get people contributing that way because it'll, it could be a tax write-off to them. And then the tax free entity and then give it to the city.
Okay, one thing I do recognize up there as well, the problem, the impact that see this business itself, what they draw, it's a car wash that sends a ton of water down that road. I actually got a bit on this today, so this, this didn't work. I would be very, very suggestive.
Yes, uh, you know, to follow, I immediately called Seven because he has all answers. Um, uh, but, but my thinking, of course, is, well, he mentioned the tractor supply, Carriage House, that's their main driveway. That's the only way their residents can get there, as well as Family Fair, Dollar General, and Labor Maker. So we have sufficient businesses that should have an interest in that area. And if we can go through the tax rate idea, you know, and maybe that will strengthen the case as well.
Yeah, because of their trucks. Flipper back to that part.
And the car wash, of course, you mentioned. So if we contact all of those businesses, we're bound to get something. I don't know who would do it, but.
Yeah, we'll discuss, we'll figure out who will make, but, all right, we'll get that taken care of.
All right, thank you. We can get an update later.
Any other agenda item?
Just a heads up, we will have a public hearing at next, um, regular meeting for, um, a proposed project plan on some water infrastructure replacement. So we're looking to submit an application to Eagles, um, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, um, through this program. Um, significantly burdened communities are eligible to have, apply for essentially, um, loan forgiveness programs to fund, um, water replacement or water projects. So we're looking, um, for the proposed project, uh, at nineteen point two million dollars. Um, this will include, um, just some improvements at a water treatment plant. Um, I know this has been talks in the work since before I came to the city, but the second water tower, tower out at four twenty five, um, property. So that will be included, um, lead replacement, um, so a series of different improvements. So we will have the formal, um, public hearing on that project applications. We are looking to skip that submitted, um, applications are due June first. So this is what we've been working with Whitman to, um, to prepare, uh, an application to submit to this. This will support why we had to do such a significant increase to our water rates. Um, that those, the dollars that we capture through that will help us support, supports for these projects.
And the other agenda. All right. Public comments at this time, if there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council. You may do so at this time. Very slightly. Right. Um, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So a copy of my report was included in the packet. Um, I just wanted to say we have submitted, um, an M dot transportation economic development fund category F grant application for West Erie Street from South Albion Street to South Superior Street. Um, this would be for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Um, so this grant provides funding for transportation projects along high commercial traffic roadways. So it's not a program that we can use on some of our local roads, but if you've traveled down that roadway, it is in, it is in dire need of some improvements. Um, so total, the maximum grant amount is three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. The estimated project cost for the roadwork is six hundred and forty thousand. So we're looking at a two hundred and sixty five thousand dollar local match to go towards the three hundred and seventy five thousand from the grant program. Um, however, the total project cost will be well over that. We're looking to, as we talked about, if we're going to do any roadway improvements, we want to make sure the infrastructure below that roadway is improved as well. So if we are awarded this grant amount, we will look into doing, um, some water and storm sewer improvements as well. I believe when added those in, it takes the project to a little over a million dollars. Um, but right now, I just included the amount that is, um, tied to that actual grant application. Those, the water improvements would not be eligible for a grant, uh, so that would come out of, um, city. The city would be required to fund that portion of that grant application. Um, on behalf of the city of Albion, Beckett and Raider, they are the, um, consulting firm that we worked with to update our comprehensive master plan. They will, um, have submitted the city's comprehensive master plan to the Michigan Association of Planning, um, for consideration for the Daniel Burnham Award for a Comprehensive Plan. Um, if you're involved in that process, or if you reviewed our comprehensive plan, we, when we did this update, we wanted to make sure it was very user friendly, um, that our residents could review this document and really understand our prior, um, comprehensive plan was very long. It included just a lot of, um, text, and we wanted to make sure that we have pictures, graphs, um, things that anyone could, could look at and could understand the message that we are trying to, to get up, get across with our comprehensive plan. So I think that would be an honor if we are chosen for that. And I, I, um, want to thank Beckett and Raider for thinking of us and, and submitting that on our behalf. So I think that would be an honor if we are chosen for that. And I I want to thank Beckon Raider for thinking of us and and submitting that on our behalf. Just want to remind everyone, since it is springtime, and I know a lot of people are probably beginning to do their spring cleaning. Our citywide cleanup event will be held on Saturday, June twenty fourth. So you have plenty of time to gather all of your items that you're looking to dispose of. At Ketchum and Harris Fields from eight AM to one PM, we will publish formal notices and also include. A list of acceptable items as well as unacceptable items that we would not be accepting. And then I just want to put this out there again, the yard waste collection through Granger. It began April fifth and it runs through the end of November. Please be mindful of the items that you're putting into your yard waste. We're three weeks in and unfortunately, last week I received a long list of residents who had contamination. Found in their and their yard waste bins. If you have any level of contamination, you will be marked with an orange sticker from Granger. And they will not service or dump your bin that week until those items are removed. So please just make sure. That you're not putting any unacceptable items. That would include soil, animal waste, plastic, twine or trash. And I know sometimes when you put it to the curb, people may walk by and dump trash. In your yard waste, but just if we can be mindful that we're only putting in acceptable items to help make sure we're being good stewards with our. Agreement that we have in place with Granger. I did send out an email. We are and in response to council member Reed's request to do a tour of the city. The land bank has offered to assist us in doing that one Saturday morning. So right now, we're looking at Saturday, May twentieth. We want to do it early that morning so that everyone, then you can get and enjoy the rest of your day. So eight AM to ten AM. Well, Director Arnold has offered to drive us in the city's recreation van. So if that does not work for you, please let me know. We're kind of, we want to get this done before things start to be become overgrown and you can't really see a lot of the area. So plan to do that Saturday, May twentieth. And that is all I have.
Council members. Fair objection.
Yes, well, one comment I do believe is voting tomorrow. They just said. Just encourage everyone to get out and vote for. That proposal. I don't like that. You hear me? I don't like saying that word. The thinking fun, you know, the thinking fun. So just encouraging people to get out and vote. It is needed, but I can't tell you all that. So then the other thing I would just like to speak of that. One of our own residents, Robert A. Hope, he turned a hundred and five years yesterday. One hundred and five young, and so he wanted me to give out his personal. They said, give him out to everybody here today. So if you are. And that's exciting to see. Hundred and five years old, yet in his right mind, put his own clothes on. Walk, go to the post office and greet everyone. So he is totally. And he went on his. Can't believe it, but yeah, they went on a little vacation. They should be arriving in town anytime. Celebrate him in Atlanta, Georgia. I say you go. But anyway, so that's very exciting. So that was, that's all that I had. Thank you so much.
And one other, the county electronics recycling event, May eighth at Ketchum Field from nine AM until one PM, I believe. So we have posted. So just tell your constituents that that is going on electronics materials. And scrap tires.
Tires, electronics.
Noon to five thirty, sorry. We have posted that on our city's Facebook page. So. More information, you can find it there.
And you have a council member. Yeah.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you to our city clerk, Jill Domingo. I know how frustrating elections can get. I worked with you and thank you for the experience. It was really rough. But thank you for our packets, dealing with the changes to the agendas at the last minute. We apologize, but you know. So I wanted to say a condolence to all the families that has lost a loved one this past week or weekend. You're definitely in a lot of people's prayers. So we just have to be nice and kind to each other a little bit more. But I just wanted to say that and thank you so much.
Any other comments? Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no.
They have a motion to excuse. Some more. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Do I have motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Support. All in favor, say aye. Post. Meeting adjourned seven fifty five PM. Everybody have a good evening.